I'll call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the City Council for the city of Marshalltown. We are in council chambers at 10 West State Street. The date is September 23rd, 2019, and it's 5:30 PM. Notice to the public, the mayor and city council welcome comment from the public. During discussion of any of the agenda items, you are required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and to limit the time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any councillor specifically. It is at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. So, I've called the meeting to order, and for those who are able, please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Lamer.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Weirin.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Goudy.
Here.
Hoop.
Here.
And Isom's absent.
Now is the time for mayor, councillor, and administrator comments, and I have a couple of comments on behalf of the mayor. Tomorrow is the ribbon cutting for the new police and fire building, 6:00 PM. It will be an open house and tours will be available. Thank you to the community for your support for this facility. It is really a wonderful facility. I've been in the training room since it opened, and that is spectacular, and they look forward to having many community groups in there. So, it will just be so helpful to our whole city, and I think help make it a safer city for all of us. I also wanted to point out, we received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association. So, congratulations to our finance department. Well done. Okay, any other comments? Let's see, council, do you have any comments? Okay, city administrator Kinzer?
None.
No? All right. Okay, do we have any years of service celebrations tonight?
No one is in attendance.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's all moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
And would you please read the items we just passed?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Approve the council minutes of September 9th in the bill list in the amount of $1,372,920.68. Recede the building reports for June, July, and August. Resolution adopting the supplement 2009 S-1 to the Code of Ordinances through Ordinance 14985. Resolution approving an agreement for the retention of tornado damage tree stumps at 8 North 10th Street. Resolution approving city street financial report. Resolution to approve final transfers between funds for fiscal year 2018, 2019, June financial statements. Resolution declaring certain property surplus and authorizing sale and disposal of the street department machinery, equipment, and bus. Liquor license renewals, OPA grill for West Boone Street, Casey's General Store on West Lincoln Way, Casey's General Store on East Main Street, TC's on North Third Avenue, and Haley's Deli BBQ and Catering on North Third Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now is the time for resolutions. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2019-238 approving an agreement with the Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce for Tourism and Promotional Services.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
I'll just note that this follows the agreement, or the discussion that we had at our previous meeting, and there were no changes from the agreement that was presented to as the draft at our last meeting.
Any council comments or questions? Public comment, questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion to approve Resolution 2019-239 setting public hearing for 28e agreement for lease of space with Marshall County Communications Commission of Marshalltown, Iowa.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the council? Oh, discussion, sorry.
Just to, this has not been something that's been in front of you for quite some time. What is out there that would be coming for you for approval at the next meeting with the public hearing would be a lease for an indefinite period for a dollar a year. You'll recall, we talked about this in the budget process, and then a special committee of council members, Lamer, Weirin, and Cahill, met with individuals from the Communications Commission and decided to stick with what had originally been proposed by the Communications Commission. So that is what is coming before you with the public hearing at the next meeting.
Correction, I don't think I was there.
Okay.
I was invited, but I wasn't there. Remember?
Don't remember you being there.
No.
Maybe Mr. Martin?
I had a conflict and...
You were.
Yeah, I was there.
Yep.
I thought Mayor Greer was, too.
And the mayor was, yes. So, is tonight's action, how does it differ from what we will be doing next meeting?
Because this is a lease of an indefinite period, it requires a public hearing, and so tonight's action is to set that public hearing before you can take consideration of the actual lease.
I'm with you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Public comment? Okay, roll call, please.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes. I'll take a motion to approve Resolution 2019-241 to fix a date for a public hearing on proposal to enter into a sewer revenue refunding loan agreement and to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed $5,100,000. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Hi, Diana Snyder, finance director.
It's not on.
So, back in 2012 and 2014, when they took out the sewer revenue bonds, they were at the rate of 2.58% and 2.9%. The interest rates...
They've been dropping, so we want to refinance, or what is referred to in the bonding community as refunding. So, we have an opportunity to save approximately $165,000 doing this, so we want to have a hearing set. So, we can go ahead after the hearing, and whenever the timing is right, if we think rates may continue to drop, we will wait a little bit. If not, we will go forward. So, we'd like the opportunity to already have the hearing over with. We're not doing the 2013 sewer revenue bonds because they are already at a rate of 2.09%. Any questions?
No? Okay, any public comment? Thank you. All right, I think we're ready for a vote. Roll call, please.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion for Resolution 2019-242 approving contract change order number one for the Phase 1 Iowa River and Lower Lynn Creek Levy Improvements Project, number 2911-3005, an increase of $145,400. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second. Discussion, please.
Good evening, Justin Nickel Public Works Director. As the mayor pro tem and the clerk just read, this is for improvements on our levy system, both on the Iowa River and the Lower Lynn Creek. The necessity for this change order was brought about after a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers over the summer, and the services that we're getting for our $145,000 include additional hydraulic analysis required by the Army Corps of Engineer, geotechnical services, most importantly figuring out where we're going to get the material to raise our levy system, the borrow source, and then at the Corps' request, an environmental analysis of what the impacts are to the wildlife, to the ecosystem of the improvements necessary for the levy system. I will quickly remind you that both FEMA and the Corps would prefer that we had additional height of our levy, engineers call it freeboard, so that the water surface elevation is not brimming to the top of our levy systems, that we have a little extra capacity. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions about this amendment, or I believe we do have a, do have a representative from H.R. Green in the crowd with us. Can I answer any questions?
We, my question is that it seemed like about two years ago, the Corps had a height elevation on the Dyke System, and emergency management had a different height elevation? Have they come to an agreement so that we can work with one elevation to figure everything out?
So, the answer is, have they come to an agreement? No. Have we blended both models? That's our approach, or I should say, H.R. Green and the city's approach, is that we've used both hydrologic models, which basically shows you what the height of the river is through there, and we've laid them over each other, so that way the higher elevation, whether it confirms with each other or whether it's different, that way we are making sure that we raise the levy the adequate amount for the higher elevation, no matter which model and what station it says is the higher elevation. Am I making sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Sure.
Just making sure. It is a complicated subject.
Yeah, it is.
Can I answer any other questions?
Will they look at what repairs need to be made?
As far as, in what specific are you asking for?
I noticed at the bend across the road from Lennox, where it makes a, it's headed kind of northeast, and then it turns back east, that most of that bank on the north side has been eaten away.
Eroding?
Yeah.
This will not. I should answer the question that I have worked with the Corps, they have a, I'm not even sure what the correct title is. It works out to that the Corps has insurance that you can use, and so I've begun the process of working with the Corps on can we make repairs, because we have, besides that, I want to say, two or three other locations where we have some erosion. This particular contract that we're talking about tonight doesn't have any bearing on that, but yes, the engineering department of Public Works is seeking to make erosion repairs along the levy system.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, where are we? Have we had a motion and a second?
Should we second and have discussion?
Any public discussion? Sorry I'm late, I had a jury trial, day four out of seven, down in Montezuma County, and I was lucky to get back here without a speeding ticket. Seeing nobody stepping forward to the microphone, let's vote.
Hoop.
Uh, yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Thank you, that carried. Next item, please.
Resolution approving contract change order number three for the High Street Drainage Improvements Project, increase of $19,500.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
Is there a second? Don't be bashful.
I'll second.
Staff discussion?
Yes, as noted in my memo, this change order is for an amount of $19,500. You'll notice it is titled Change Order Number Three. By our own purchasing policy, the director of Public Works has the ability to approve change orders up to $25,000 aggregate amount. Change orders number one and two were approved by myself totaling $14,550. This $19,500, if broken down, is for $16,000 in pavement markings. The request is for thermoplastic, which is a little higher durability, a little longer lasting than the pavement paint that we put down, specifically for the crosswalk at the intersection of Fourth and Ingledo, adjacent to Lenihan School. It is more expensive, but it also is more durable and lasts longer than the pavement markings. And then the $3,500, the remainder, are for storm sewer adjustments necessary for a water main that was in conflict with, I believe, two of the structures, storm sewer structures that we put in the ground. So those are the two items that make up the $19,500. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Are there any other crosswalks that they're learning, that they would like to upgrade? I mean, if this one is kind of a precedent setting, will it be, will it follow through at other crosswalks, or will we continue to use the painted system?
When you say they, I want to make sure I understand exactly what you're asking, council.
Good point. Will the crosswalks be maintained with the painted system, or will the city look to upgrade other crosswalks throughout the community?
Yeah, so the majority, what we paint in-house, which happens every year before school starts, and the vast majority of crosswalks in the community use the paint system. To apply the thermoplastic, you actually have to have a blowtorch, and you heat up the pavement, and it's like a big rubber stamp and a sticker, and you press it down. Our staff isn't sophisticated enough to do that. So, that's the reason that I'm taking this effort when it's underneath a contract, not done by our own staff. My answer would be yes, if there are opportunities to use thermoplastic in the future for a more durable crosswalk pattern, to save us the need to maintain it on a yearly basis. I certainly will look to do that. There aren't any that I can think of pressing off the top of my head.
How long does it, is it supposed to last?
That's an excellent question. I'm hoping on the order of five to 10 years longer. I can take you out in our parking lot out here to the north and show you some areas where there is some of it. Depending on the snowplows and how it works, some of those haven't been touched in 10 years and are still there. Some of them get painted over on a frequent basis. Again, my hope will be certainly longer than every year that we need to paint them now. I'm hoping five to 10 years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments up here? Other questions or comments from the public? Call the roll, please.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Carried, thank you. On to item number six, Madam Clerk.
Resolution approving contract change order for the 2017 manhole and point repair project, an increase of $53,561.50.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you.
As the city clerk just read, this is for a change order for the manhole and point repair project. To refresh the council's memory, that is a project that is underway, I believe, in the order of about $3 million to $4 million, replacing, oh, approximately 125 different manhole locations throughout the city. As you can imagine, manholes are buried underground, and so there isn't, not every location and every detail that we have verified before we go and dig in that location. So, this very first change order is for, I believe it was at about Main Street and 17th or 16th, I want to say, work that has been done. When we opened up the area to replace the sanitary sewer manhole, we found a 12-inch metal concrete, or metal storm sewer pipe and an existing storm sewer manhole that were greatly deteriorated. My philosophy is to not just bury problems and leave them for the next person, so with my direction, we went ahead and replaced the 12-inch metal pipe with concrete pipe and replaced the storm sewer structure with a new precast concrete structure to make sure that we didn't have continued erosion issues around our brand-new sanitary manhole. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this item.
Any questions or comments?
I would add that this is possibly a recurring theme on this project as we work on manholes. I think my general philosophy will be that if we need to fix a problem, we're going to fix a problem while we're in that location. For $3.5 million, $4 million, we're getting 125 locations. If we're worried about the budget, it'd be my opinion that maybe we pare back those 125 locations to 120 or 115, whatever's necessary to not let the scope and the budget inflate at a more than necessary rate.
Thank you. Public comment? Roll call.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Thank you, that carried as well. Next resolution, please.
Resolution approving agreements for general administration services and housing technical services with Region Six Resource Partners for the 2019 Community Development Block Grant and adopting required policies.
Is there a motion to approve?
It's all moved.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion?
Just to let you know what all of this is, is that we were awarded $500,000 in a housing community development block grant that was disaster-specific, and so we kind of talked a little bit about how most of this would be used for owner occupied housing rehabilitation. So there's an administration agreement with Region Six to approve this, as well as then we did issue a request for proposal for the technical services needed, of which Region Six was the respondent. And then basically federal law requires that we provide verification of a number of different policies, and the ones that are included are the ones that we did not have on file. The ones that we did have on file are an equal opportunity employment policy, as well as our purchasing policy.
Any questions or comments up here? Down there? Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Carried as well, thank you. On to resolution number eight, Madam Clerk.
Resolution ordering construction of the Veterans Memorial Coliseum renovation, setting public hearing on plan specifications, form of contract, and cost, and directing publication of notes to bidders, project BLD 19001.
Motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
This is the step we've all been waiting to reach, so we are here. And this would result in a public hearing at the October 14th meeting with a proposed schedule that would have basically the low bidder coming back to you for approval at the October 28th council meeting.
Can I get an hallelujah?
Dollar amount? Was totaled $3 million?
3.6 is the total, it was slightly more than 3.6. I don't remember what it was off the top of my head, but that's the number that we're still working with.
Thank you.
I should say that that does include some things that are not construction-related as well. That's the total number, so I think the construction-only number is like 3.1 million.
Okay. Other questions or comments up here? Public comment? Roll call.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thank you, carried unanimously as well. Let's go on to the ninth and last resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing expenditure and transfer of council-designated, excuse me, local option sales and service tax reserve to partially fund the 10% local match for the design of an airport hangar, 100 foot by 120 foot, and design of an airport terminal building.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Again, Justin Nickel Public Works Director, I believe it was in July, and then earlier this month, I brought back a couple of agreements for you, one with the FAA and one with the Iowa DOT for the design of a new hangar and the possibility of a new terminal. And then we took a look in the CIP and realized we probably needed some money to make our local match, and then to go ahead and afford the design of a terminal building. The resolution sets forth that we need approximately $54,100 for the design of a terminal building based on the agreement signed with Clapseton and Garber, and that our 10% city match for the design of hangar improvements was $6,200, totaling $60,300. This request is that the council makes a one-time transfer from local option sales tax to fund the 10% of the airport hangar design and the total amount of the design for a terminal. Can I answer any questions?
We still have these together, that bothers me.
We do for this resolution, you're right, councillor Hoop, but as I mentioned last time, we have a separate design contract for the terminal and one for the hangar, and we have separate agreements with the FAA, or the FAA is not funding either of it, and the Iowa DOT, it's a separate item.
Other questions or comments of the councillors? Questions or comments for the public? Let's vote on this one. This is going faster than I guess, kind of like me coming back from Montezuma.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
No.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well. And I can't help myself but to comment on the nice job that our director of the airport is doing out there and the relationship we've had with CGA over the years, so. Steve Valbrack, thank you for what you do. On to item H, ordinances, number one, please.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 77, Schedule 2, no parking anytime by adding no parking on 17th Street from Main Street to 220 feet north to the creek, second reading.
Anybody have a motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion.
We discussed this item at our last meeting, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. And just to pick up for the city clerk, there is the possibility of waiving the third reading.
Big picture, this is because of what?
Yes, I received a request from the, I believe there are four houses on North 17th Street between Main Street and the creek, with some pictures and a request that they were having trouble getting into and out of their driveways because of people that did not live on North 17th Street parking.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion up here? If not, any discussion from the public? If not, let's call the roll on this one.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to waive the third reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion about that one? I'm not sure you get discussion about that one. You know, about the time I retire as the mayor, I'll figure out the rules of order.
We should have the option to discuss this. I don't see the urgency. I know it's an inconvenience for those folks, but I'm really reluctant when it's not, and I don't think it's urgent, so I would rather let it play out the usual process for three readings.
Any other discussion up here? Public comment? Let's vote.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
No.
Cahill?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Onto item I, discussion items. And the first one is proposed reconstruction expansion. Oh, I missed one.
Yes.
Sorry. Now on to the last ordinance, number two under H. Would you read that one, please?
We have an ordinance, first reading, to amend the number of handicap parking spaces per request to remove one space at three eleven West Main Street and add one space on South Second Avenue near REM. And we've also included some corrections to some existing space locations. And there's no public hearing required with a possible waiver of readings.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I see on the ordinance or up above, it says three eleven West Main Street, and down below, the documentation says three eleven East Main Street. Can I have a clarification?
It should be West Main Street.
I'll have to admit, I'm confused about that, too, if we're talking about South Second Avenue.
Second Avenue and West, I don't think cross.
They're about five blocks away, right?
There's two different actions here.
Two different places.
Two different requests.
To clarify.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So they're not that.
There's a request to reduce by one spot at three eleven West Main and a request to add a second spot on South Second Avenue.
Unrelated, though.
You're correct, yes.
Okay, so they can be five blocks apart.
Okay.
But it's all one chapter, one table in our code ordinances, so that's where you can consider multiple amendments at once.
Has the clerk received any objections or comments about this ordinance proposal?
None, none other than what's noted in the packet.
Okay. Other comments or questions up here? From the public? Roll call it is.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Carried as well. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I would press for a decision to include and not go into the second and third reading of this. I think there's an expediency issue here, and I support combining into the first proposal.
I'll take that as a motion to waive that reading. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry?
Thank you. Want to waive second and third?
Yeah, he wants to.
Second and third. I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion? Roll call.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Carried as well. Thank you. Now on to item I, discussion. And the first one is proposed reconstruction and expansion of MHS tennis and pickleball facility.
Yes, we have Dr. Theron Schudie with us from the superintendent of the school district to talk about a project. So you're in control now.
Thank you. We'll just let the PowerPoint run, which will show a variety of the problems related to the current condition of the tennis courts. Thank you very much for providing me some time to speak with you about this proposed project. I want to open by thanking the city for their tremendous support with Woodbury Playground Build this summer, particularly Brad Weave, the park superintendent, and Rick Legg, the street superintendent. There were a lot of moving parts to this project, as you can imagine, with upwards of three hundred volunteers. And we had an extensive list of tools that we had to come up with, either through borrowing or donations. And Park and Rec was tremendous on that with us. And then we in kind were able to donate back a lot of new tools to Park and Rec that had been donated for the project and were way more than what we needed within the school district. And then I had reached out to Justin and Joel and Jessica in the twelfth hour when we realized that we weren't going to be able to clean the playground asphalt sufficiently for priming, for painting, a day later. And it was amazing how quickly the street department responded, came out, prepped the areas that we needed, and it just made things go so smooth. So we're really thankful for that. The Marshalle Town High School tennis facility was originally built in nineteen seventy-four in a collaborative project between the city and the school district. There have been eight courts in a straight line on the northernmost part of the property, kind of adjacent to where the community auditorium is. Those have served us really well for forty-five years, especially considering the industry standard for the lifespan of tennis courts is twenty-five, maybe thirty at the best. I think that speaks to our collaborative work as it relates to the maintenance and upkeep of those courts, to be able to get those many years out of them. The condition of the current courts, which of those eight courts, I would say two of the eight are unusable in terms of serious competitive play. And obviously, for the high school, we use it both for physical education, intermurals, and then the high school athletic programs, of which we have anywhere from thirty-five to fifty boys and thirty-five to fifty girls a year in those programs. I think a lot of that probably has had to do over the years with the Park and Rec program as well, which I think in recent years has been struggling, but our hopes that in building once again a first-class facility for both community and school district use, that we can resurrect that program, which is really the foundation for a high school program and the success they have as well. So we did a long-range facilities, athletic facilities, plan last fall, and in doing so, we evaluated all our existing facilities that hadn't had recent work. With the tennis courts, our architect and engineers from our architect firm, F.E.H., had determined that they did not feel like these courts were in a place where we could once again put significant funds to try to remedy the problems that were there, the structural cracking and such. We also, as of last week or the last two weeks, had TerraCon come in and do their own evaluation. And I sent Jessica, although I don't think you have it as part of these documents, their analysis, which also said putting any significant amount of money would be basically throwing good money at bad due to the fact that none of the repairs could be guaranteed. In fact, we had tennis court construct, construction firms and vendors come bid the last time in two thousand and two, and some of them refused to bid for fear of having their name associated with work that they couldn't ensure was going to meet our satisfaction, meaning the school district and the city at that time, let alone in two thousand and nineteen. So with the West End courts having been repurposed successfully into footsall courts, that also reduced our opportunity for kids to practice and or play, because we would utilize those even though they were in very poor condition for junior varsity and extra matches and that sort of thing. So what we're proposing in this reconstruction project is taking what has been an outstanding eight-court facility, reconstructing it in a different configuration and making it a twelve-court facility. And the reason that twelve is important is, number one, it replenishes the courts that tennis players lost with the repurposing of West End. It has them all on one site, which is hugely advantageous. And by having twelve courts on one site in the tennis world, that really opens the door to being able to host significant, both youth and adult, events similar to what we see with the YMCA with their state swim meets for youth. We could host Iowa tournaments, and Marshalle Town's a prime location for that because we're centralized between Des Moines and Cedar Rapids, which are hotbeds for tennis, and Iowa City, which is close by, so we have a natural draw there. And I can assure you, just based on my own experiences over the past twenty years, that those types of tournaments, people will come from each side of the state in order to participate, if not the Midwest. It actually would put us in a good position to hold Midwest regional-type tournaments as well, because of our central location here in Marshalle Town. From a high school standpoint, it allows us to be a viable bidder for basically any state-level competition up to the state tournament. So we would definitely be highly desired to be a host for anything up through substate. In order to actually host state, you have to have access to multiple indoor courts as well, which obviously we don't have. So what the proposal here is, we have very preliminary designs, which I'm sure will change or would change as we would move forward in this project. And we have preliminary cost estimates to do everything that is being proposed. And again, we're looking at this hopefully carrying us the next forty-five years, assuming that between the city and the school district, we maintain the courts as well as we did this last time. We've got twelve tennis courts in configurations of three essentially, so four sets of three. We've got three pickleball courts, which is a hugely popular and growing racket sport, which accommodates all ages, from children up through seniors. And we also have appropriate spectating areas, meaning there's pathways between the sections of courts where small mobile bleachers can be sat during competitions, whether it be during the high school tennis season or during tournaments and stuff like that. We also have provisions for a couple restrooms, because as it's been, we've either needed to make sure the roundhouse was open or the auditorium was open, or the high school was open, which, you know, in this day and age, that there's some concerns with security and that sort of thing. Plus, it's quite a distance for people to travel. There's also parking off of Second Street, which does not exist currently. This would enable us to have appropriate ADA accessibility, and it also would have appropriate parking without having to navigate a hill, being just adjacent to the courts. What I would say is, when and if we get to a point of being able to bid this out, we will be very strategic in how we structure it in terms of alternate bids, because some of these auxiliary pieces, we wouldn't want to leverage whether we do the project or not. So it may be that, just throwing out examples, that the parking lot would be an alternate bid, or it may be that the pickleball courts would be an alternate bid. Or it could be, we have provisions for lighting on the southernmost courts, or possibly a few of the tennis courts on the south side furthest away from the residences, which we'd need to do some footwork with, talking and working with them to explain how the lighting's different today, and it shouldn't pose huge problems as it may have posed with the light casting into homes and that sort of thing. Talk to them about if we were to do the lighting, you know, having restrictions on when they could be used, so that they're not running at midnight or one o'clock or two in the morning. But what I would propose is that the light poles and the lights themselves would likely be an alternate. We definitely want to do the infrastructure, the underground work, when this work would be done as part of the base bid. The project is a two point two million, roughly, preliminary cost estimate. My hopes are that if the city is willing to be an equal partner with the school district in this, that that would put us in a favorable position that we could more successfully go after grant funding, such as Martha Island Thai. But I believe that in order to be in a position of doing that, that we would need to show unity and desire to continue on, hopefully for the next forty-five years as partners. It would be a great facility, I think, for the youth programming in this community, Park and Rec. Our intention would be to work with USTA to do blended lines on all the courts. So today, they have a smaller court through a blended line system that does not distract from the regular court play that could be used for youngsters that are ten and under. There's also different lines that could be put down if desired for eight and under and that sort of thing. So it really, I think, can serve a lot of great purposes and be like many of the things that have happened, whether it's the Roundhouse expansion, whether it's the Coliseum project. It could be another reason for Marshalle Town to become a destination for both competitive, recreational, leisure activities. So that being said, any questions?
Just a comment. I'm glad that it would put us in a position to be able to host those substate tournaments. That was a real bummer with the soccer, the men's soccer last season, that we don't have that facility. And so I at least have that on my radar as a project I would love to see someday, a proper soccer field. But yeah, I think this would be great. We play, my son and I play out there once in a while, and it's pretty rough. It's pretty rough. But I think, big picture, it's important to be able to host those sports. I like the pickleball courts. I see people playing it all the time, everywhere. And I know there are a lot of teams around town that do that. I don't know how to play, but it's great to get people out active. I think it's good to promote activities like this in our community. I just had one question on the timing.
Yep.
What are you thinking timing-wise?
Best-case scenario would be to be in a position to move forward on this project close to or immediately following the high school tennis season in the spring. Actually, the way that it's phased, it would be possible, once the ground is ready for construction, that we could start Phase One, which would be working on the six new courts. It would be south of the existing courts. One of the challenges is going to be, there's really only one other court at Riverview Park for tennis. So we want to make sure that there's always available courts to be used, whether it's for the youth programming or the high school, for example, once construction has started. So we would start on the newer courts to the south as kind of Phase One. Then once those are complete to the point where they can be used, then we'd start the reconstruction of the existing courts. One of the things that I'm really interested in looking at is, they have new strategies now with post-tension concrete that are deemed to be more effective for longer longevity of the courts. It's extraordinarily expensive generally, but there are ways that you can go over existing courts with that post-tension concrete and then do an overlay. So that's something that I most definitely would like to look at on the northernmost courts, if it in fact could be a cost savings for not going below. It'd be kind of an interesting experiment to see how those courts would fare, assuming that they're less expensive than the traditional courts that we would be doing on the south side. I truly believe to do all of them that way would be cost prohibitive. But I'm interested in taking a look at, through the process, further research as to what we might do on those northernmost courts and, you know, anything that we can do to capture as much or all of this facility that's being proposed and do it at or below budget will be investigated.
Other questions or comments up here? I can't help but point out that Coach Bill Wilson is here. I spent about four years of following him around different towns and cities in Iowa when our daughter was playing tennis. And I can tell you that many of the other facilities in towns our size are much nicer than what we have now for the spectators and the court construction and that sort of thing. So we'll just be playing catch-up with Mason City and other cities where our kids have been playing tennis.
Yeah, this would put us on par where most of the other CAML communities, the Ames, are probably the one thing that would set us apart a little bit is the incorporation of pickleball courts. I know Grinnell recently put some in in their community, but I think, you know, to have all of these racket sports in one location would be a great asset. And lines could be, you know, if there was a desire to do something with pickleball on a weekend or something, to hold a local tournament or something, you can utilize tennis courts wits to do it. It's not ideal, but you could, you know, come up. I have some experience with this in the Quad Cities. We incorporated pickleball into what we did in reconstructing the Bedendorf tennis courts, and it's truly a build-it-and-they-will-come. It's, on any given Saturday, the ones that were built adjacent to one of our elementary schools, there'd be a hundred and fifty people show up and just rotate through, playing friendly competitive games. And it's really a big social type thing as well. And I think we would see a lot of people starting to pick it up that maybe otherwise don't.
It's wildly popular down in Des Moines, pickleball. And it's a little bit like our footsall courts on the weekends, too, now that we convert it there. Seeing you here and knowing that you were here for the concert, I know you got on your cell phone the night of the Jason Brown concert to get your class to pony up a little money. How much money did you raise?
I'm trying to remember.
Fifteen thousand five hundred.
Sixteen thousand five hundred.
Well, thank you for that.
Yep, you're welcome.
Another good project.
Thank you.
So we're not done with our discussion on this one yet, because I did want Dr. Schudie, if you want, to just stay close in case there's any questions. So there comes the question of funding, and Dr. Schudie did send me some different information. But this ultimately does come up for more discussion in the third item under discussions. One important thing to note, so kind of the total ask here is approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand, a little less, but in rounding up to that number, it doesn't hurt. One of the things that you need to know is that this would be considered a general corporate purpose project, which the city cannot borrow more than seven hundred thousand dollars without a referendum. So you are limited at being able to borrow seven hundred thousand dollars for this project. However, we do have other funding sources, such as the local option sales tax that's council-designated, as well as the CIP tax levy, where that additional fifty thousand could be budgeted in. And so one of the things that I had mentioned that was an option in here was the school district being the entity that would borrow everything. That is no longer on the table. So what I had recommended is kind of our only option at this point of borrowing the maximum we can borrow of seven hundred thousand and then funding the remainder from an internal source that's already in existence. And so I wanted to lay that out and see if there's any questions on that part before we would then be discussing this and a list of other priorities.
So I asked you earlier today about the capital improvement plan. So, I asked you earlier today about the capital improvement plan. I, it seems like a really good fit for that. And I wondered if we could either take some of it out of this year's capital improvement plan by shifting other things and then use the rest for next, you know, out of next year's budget? Because the timing is a little bit on the bubble, a little bit. I mean, I don't know when the bills would come due, but if we could arrange for the CIP to handle it, that makes sense to me. I just didn't know if that was a viable option.
It, it really isn't. So the total amount that we bring in annually from that CIP tax levy is about six hundred and fifty thousand. So that means we would pretty much be, we'd be defunding mostly parks projects and probably some other projects within departments for the remainder of this fiscal year, which I don't even know if we could, because our big ones we've already kind of undertaken. And so then, you'd be putting aside essentially two, two years of half of that funding, which is basically used by every department to fund multiple capital needs. So that's why I'm not recommending that as the main funding source for this. What you could always decide to do is that amount of what a larger debt issuance would be, rather than putting on the tax levy, you could say that, that seven hundred thousand equals, let's say, forty thousand in interest, or principal and five thousand in interest each year. You could direct us to build that into the capital improvement plan, so those repayments would come out of there. But to come up with that much as an upfront number is, is very difficult from that source.
That makes sense, yeah.
Other questions or comments by the councilors?
I have, I'd like to know how much, how many times or how many kids are involved in our program that use the tennis courts? Do you have a number, or can you give some kind of an idea?
I'm Harvard Parks Director. As I think, the last couple of years, we have not had a tennis lessons. The Bobcat Academy has kind of assumed the youth role in the community is doing the lessons. So we haven't had a park and rec for, I think, like, two or three years.
Okay, are you planning on putting, putting it back in place?
I would love to, I mean, I, I think, in my mind, park and rec should be providing a lot of introductory to sports and tennis, golf, swim lessons, or things that people can do from age of five up to ninety-five. So, I would love to see that back again.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions or comments up here? From the public?
My name is Jim Langoma, I live at seven eighteen South Twelve Street. About fifteen years ago, I was a tennis coach, and we were getting somewhere around sixty to eighty kids out for tennis. So when you take the, do the math and try to divide, you know, that into eight courts or whatever it was, it was very, very difficult. Plus, one of the problems that I would run into would be, if there was a problem on Court Number One, somebody would call a timeout, you'd go running down there. Then Court Eight, you go to the other end, back and forth. So, the way this, these courts are set up would be a great thing for a competitive environment, I believe. So, plus, I think Marshall Town would be great to have the Marshall Town Open again. I remember playing in the Marshall Town Open in nineteen seventy-five, and we got a lot of people here. A lot of people came to town, and I think it'd be wonderful to the community, so.
Thanks, Jim. I remember well when your daughter was number one in the state of Iowa, playing tennis, she was fun to watch.
Mark Eaton, ten oh seven South Tenth Avenue. I used to play on those courts when I was in junior high. They look in pretty rough shape, so they probably need redone. The thing I'm concerned about is two things. Mr. Shutey said that the Thai Foundation is basically on the fence, whether the city goes first. So they're like doing last dollar in planning. The memo says council can get, can borrow seven hundred thousand with a public hearing. But if you want to borrow more, you gotta go for a referendum, which is actually a vote of the people. And if it's a good job, then I think the vote of the people will support it. So why end run around the people? Why not just do the referendum? Second, this, we, forty-four percent of our city taxes, our property taxes go to the city, or go to the school, thirty-eight percent to the city. The city doesn't have enough money to pay its bills and do the projects it needs to do. The school system has several buckets it can put its money in. Property taxes fund several of them, one of them's Pearl. Pearl's the playground equipment, I don't know if this falls under Pearl, or Pebble, or what, but Pearl is maxed out. Pebble can also be voted on by the taxpayer. So, why end run around the taxpayer when we could do it right and let them vote on it? Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments out there? Need a motion or direction to staff?
No, this is going to be one of the items that we did put in as a placeholder in the discussion on Number Three for this upcoming borrowing.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rising to discuss it, let's go on to Number Two, which is the follow-up discussion on quiet zones.
Yes, so July twenty-second was when we last had Greg with Bolton and Mink here to do a presentation before you about what quiet zones are, as well as what improvements were being proposed for each of the intersections in that. And so those, those images and the cost opinion are in the packet. What we have done in the meantime, at the council's request, is that we have done a few different public engagement things. The first was a survey that was out there for about two weeks, that just asked the general public kind of what they thought about the quiet zones and what they wanted to see. The second was an open house at the end of August, which I will let Greg talk about that one. I'll go over through the, the survey information here initially. Ultimately, we had eight hundred and five responses, which I thought was a very good response rate and pretty impressive for some of our other surveys. And so, what we ultimately found, and I think I have, nope, I did not. I did not include those. We have the, the results basically showed that, of the question of, are you in favor of the quiet zones, was basically fifty-five percent against forty-five percent for. And so, what I did do, because we had the question initially to start out, was, do you live in Marshall Town? Do you work in Marshall Town? And so I did just play around with that data to see if it would change anything, knowing that, of course, the train sounds would impact those living in Marshall Town, probably more than those who don't live in Marshall Town. And ultimately, when I extracted out all the responses from the one hundred and twenty-six who indicated they did not live in Marshall Town, it ultimately did not change anything drastically. It was forty, fifty-four percent opposed and forty-six percent for the project. The surprising thing that did come out of the survey was that the question about closing the Second Street Crossing in a two-to-one type of response, there was, it was for closing the Second Street Crossing and using the viaducts as the alternate route if that was what was so needed. So, I don't know if Greg wants to talk about the meeting we had.
Greg, we're starting with Bolton and Mink. Like Jessica said, we had the public meeting that was held at Fisher Community Center. We did have fifteen people show up, talk about the project. What we did was, we had large boards, kind of the same boards that we gave the council presentation, documenting what a quiet zone is, how it's implemented, and then also showing them the improvements at each of the intersection. The public response that we got was very similar to Jessica, it was probably a fifty-fifty response from the public, as far as when it came down to whether they'd recommend it or not. Very good discussion, some of the big questions we had were just what a quiet zone was, what it looks like when it gets implemented, and then some of the costs as well. And then, we did talk with most of the people about if they would be willing to close Second Street, or, yeah, Second Street. I think I talked to, out of the fifteen, I think I heard one or two that were adamantly opposed to it. Everybody else was okay with closing that intersection.
So it's kind of odd that you have, you know, open house meeting results that really sort of mirror what you have in a, a survey that you don't really know who is taking it. But, one of the things that, you know, we've kind of heard since this project has been out there, there's some confusion on the dollar amounts, we talked, and that's why I included the cost opinion in here. We talked about it being a one million dollar project, but there's kind of two components of what makes up this project. The first is that there's significant street improvements at each of the intersections, which in the packet are basically detailed on each one of these graphics, showing, you know, sidewalk replacement, adding additional pavement in the roadway. The biggest thing being proposed is the, the medians that would be basically obstructing somebody from driving around the gates, which is the, that's how you, that's the large safety improvement. And so, about, of that approximate one million dollar budget, four hundred thousand of that is related to those street improvements. And so, the proposed funding source for that is road use tax dollars. We ultimately had the full one million budget in road use tax this year, when we were going through the budget, didn't quite have that breakdown, so we just put it all in. So, the money is budgeted in the road use tax fund for this year. And that leaves the remaining six hundred thousand. And the reason why we're talking about this tonight is because we would propose a general obligation bond amount of six hundred thousand dollars to cover that remaining expense. What that expense is, is that we can't hire a contractor to work in the Union Pacific right-of-way, which you can start to see, you know, on some of these improvements, how signals have to move out so that you have a little bit more space to work with, rather than kind of the narrow configurations you have now. Union Pacific is the only one who can do that work. And so it ends up being what sounds like a fairly large payment to Union Pacific of approximately six hundred thousand, but it's truly for work to be completed within, within their right-of-way. So, that kind of clarifies, that was one of the things that came up, is it, does it really cost a million dollars? And how do you pay for it? So we, we clarified that one quite a bit at the open house. The other argument that has been out there is that without train horns, it makes the intersections less safe. And that is indeed not the case, because what you have done is added these medians in, which basically prevents a car from going around a gate, or prevents, you know, other traffic from trying to get into the railroad right-of-way once those crossing arms are down. This was one of those things, it, it was not that long ago, it was early twenty seventeen, where that actually happened, and there was a gentleman who passed away from that. So, it's not unheard of to have something like that happen in our community, with it being so recent. The, the other thing that I really wanted to just mention, and where this all kind of comes back to, is two very important areas of our community, the first one being downtown. That this was one thing that came up quite frequently in the steering committee as part of the downtown master plan. Ultimately, there, there being question and concern about development downtown and downtown living, when you do have quite a bit of, of train sound. One of the initial catalyst projects that didn't kind of make it to the end run was a hotel. That was something that there was concern around, you know, could you have a hotel in an area where you do have a lot of what we call train noise, noise pollution? The other area that this, this does impact is what we've named the Lynn Creek District through our wayfinding. And that is truly basically the area from probably Center Street to the west to South Twelve Street and beyond, really, because the Lynn Creek Trail continues beyond that as well, where we've really created a wonderful recreational area that serves trail users, Little League Baseball, Marshall Town Football League, the Softball Association, as well as the skate park, and then, you know, now being some connectors with the Iowa River Trail as well. So we have a lot of investment happening, and I would say reinvestment too, when you look at some of the things happening right there within that Lynn Creek District. And so, those were things that I, that I thought were very important to talk about, where we've done some plans, or we, we know that we have some things coming along where ultimately, this project kind of fits in there and has an impact, not only on residents currently living, who might have answered that the train noise is an issue to, to them at their homes, but throughout areas where we do have a lot of people coming to recreate, as well as to shop in our downtown area as well. So, with that, my recommendation is that we would move forward with funding this in our bar, upcoming borrowing to be completed in twenty twenty.
Other comments or suggestions?
Just one, I, the cup, there, remind me on Second Street what the options are. I know, I think that it was just a lot, it cost a lot less to just close the intersection.
That is correct.
Was that, so.
Yes.
I don't, I don't use it all that much, but I know that in the past two weeks, I've missed my exit to take my daughter swimming, for swimming lessons, and I've had to go around, and I'm like, well, Second Street's still open, for now, but it won't be someday. So, I have, I have thought it could be closed, I don't see a ton of traffic through there, but I know there are, there are. I paid attention tonight, just because of this, but. Second Street. Second Street. So, so I just wanted to, I just wanted to see the two options again, please.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's up right now is Option A, and I'll let Greg talk more about that one.
So, Option A, what we're looking at, so the, the orange that you see on your screen or the center part, we'd be putting that median in, just like we would on the rest of the crossings. Putting in sidewalks, not sidewalks, putting in curbs along Second on the south side. Minats has a driveway that actually enters into the right-of-way behind the railroad crossing arm, so we'd want to close that off. And then, looking through this intersection, so we have four tracks that pedestrians have to cross on the current sidewalks. And talking through with UP and with the Federal Railroad, and the space and the time gaps, those sidewalks would be, to implement a quiet zone, would need to be closed. So, that automatically generates a concern for me, because that is a highly pedestrianized area. You have the Y there, you have the pool. If we close the sidewalks, that's going to move the pedestrians onto the roadway. So we started trying to develop, okay, what are our options to, to come, to combat that? So that's where we looked at the closing Second Street, that's where that option ultimately came up, because then what we could do is we could work with the UP, and they would actually fence off the right-of-way, so there wouldn't be any location for a pedestrian to actually cross there. So that's kind of where the two options came from. Option Number One, which is looking at adding the, adding the medians, putting in the curbs, removing the sidewalks, is about a hundred and, roughly two hundred thousand. And just closing Second Street, so we'd be removing the pavement, is about fifty-five thousand.
And I'm gonna pull up now what Option Two looks like, which is, as Greg said, closing Second Street.
And then, the, the unknown number here at this point, for when you do a full closure, where the UP is willing to pay and give money for that. We don't know what that amount is, it depends on how critical that crossing is to them too. So that could be part of that negotiation process through the project of working with the UP and figuring out how much money they're willing to put towards the project if this road, if this crossing is closed.
How far would that fencing extend?
We, we'd have to kind of work with and see what it would make sense with the UP, because typically, the UP will install that on their project cost, it wouldn't even be a part of the project. They'd be protecting their right-of-way, so they'd go as far as they feel necessary to stop the pedestrian traffic.
I keep meaning to do it, but I forget. As I'm driving to the wife and the office, often I'll get, I'll commit, so I, I can't go the other way. And then the crossing bars come down. I've been meaning to time the, time it to see if I go back and go around on the Third, Sixth Avenue viaduct and then come back in the back way, whether that costs me a minute, or two, or three. Do you know if anybody's timed that to see?
I have not personally, no, but I, it's not going to, I don't, the, the delay time, if Second were to close, I don't see, for, for vehicle traffic, it would not be a large increase. It would be a large, the biggest increase you would see would be for pedestrians.
And I guess the Center Street Viaduct is the other option, too.
Correct.
Your Honor, has anybody looked at the utilities in that, in that area?
We've looked at.
You can't, I'll just tell you right now, you can't shut the street off. There's major utilities in that area that have to have access to them at all times, so.
And we'd be able to maintain that, we'd still maintain through the UP, we'd work through and take.
Well, you can't put the fence up, I'm telling you, you can't put a fence up.
We could do it through, right-of-way, through easements, through there, and then with the fence, there would be, if we had to do utility work, it would be the city's responsibility to remove the fence, repair the utilities, and then put the fence back up.
I don't think so. I think the utilities already have right-aways through there, matter of fact, I know there's one, because I bought it.
Yeah.
And you're not gonna, with a, with, I know there's a sixteen and a twelve-inch water main, there are main mains going into city to go into the pumping station, or in that, in that street alone, and you're not gonna shut them off.
And I don't think, we, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be removing utilities, it's just turning the street off.
I don't think Second Street deserves to be shut. I've used it a lot, and there's a lot of people using it. I don't want it, I don't want it closed, I want it open.
The last time we discussed this, the UP came in after that discussion and put a fence up on the west side of that street, going west, and it was a four-foot-high fence. And I know any ten-year-old can hop that fence and be gone in, you know, in five seconds, so. I don't know what size fence they're talking, or if they're gonna redo. So I don't know what size fence they're talking, or if they're going to redo the fence, but a four-foot fence will stop nothing.
Yeah, no, no discussions on fence sizes has been had with the UP, yet kind of the first direction is kind of getting direction from council. One of the next steps is, would be an onsite meeting with the UP, the Iowa DOT, city staff, and members from the Federal Rail Association to look at each crossing and determine the requirements for those crossings. That's the next step. And that's when the discussion with the height of the fence could be had.
So would permanent medians be digging into the right of way also?
Yeah, they're not going to do everything they want to do.
The, the research hasn't been done on that particular intersection, needs more research before they make the, I was surprised to see this because it hasn't been done.
So that's where, with sort of initial engineering reviews, we typically, you know, as Justin described, you, you basically do everything that's on the surface. When you get into the engineering of what the project is, that's where you start doing that more detailed look. And so ultimately, this was just sort of a, an above-the-ground examination of this is what could be done to meet the Federal Railroad Administration requirements for quiet zones at each of these. And so if you want to move it into the next step, there is certainly more engineering that needs to be done, and that is the point when that would be looked at.
Well, we got, we have the public that already said they don't want it done. They don't want to spend the money there. Don't we?
Yeah, that's, that's what the survey results indicated, but ultimately, it comes back to you to determine if that's a priority or not.
Okay.
I got another question if I can.
You can.
Who maintains this? Once, if it were to be reality, become reality, who's to maintain these structures?
It would, it would be a city's responsibility to maintain the medians and the curbs, just like on South 12th Ave. Right now, you currently have the median in place. That would be the city's responsibility. The railroad would still maintain the track and the crossing arms.
I don't know if we do the best job of maintaining what we have right now. I'm, I'm not pleased with what we're doing. There's, there's deterioration of the safety elements at a couple of the crossings. So anyway, I want to make that clear.
Well, if you, if you have something specific that is city-related, the street department is who that needs to be reported to. So we'd certainly want to know about that. And if it's not us, I think we found that we have a very good relationship with our local UP shop and the, the director there. And so if it's something Union Pacific related, we can certainly contact them. And so if you want to communicate with myself and Justin on those issues, we'd be happy to help with that.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion up here?
I am trying to reconcile in my mind the, the expense for this. And, and that was one of the things that I heard from constituents, again, was the expense. What would we be giving up to do this? I mean, is that, we, I know we haven't determined that, but what, can you give me some, some thoughts of what would we put on the back burner?
Well, that's really your next item of discussion. So ultimately, those, this is, this is where it comes back to, we've, we've got one study that is saying that this is a priority, and it was specifically called out as a high priority recommendation. And so that's, that's really where a lot of the emphasis behind this is coming from. And so you have to determine if that plan recommendation is indeed a priority to you all at this point, or at some point in the future, if it's not right now.
Other discussion? If not up here, how about in the public?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Ms. K Hill asks about the funding. Says $400,000 should come from road use tax fund. In your next packet thing, it's going to say that we have a $350,000 road use tax allocation. So that doesn't kind of add up. Five, 55%, 54% of 629 is 367 people say that they don't want this to happen. 450 people said the senior citizens center shouldn't be torn down. We're talking about giving $2.2 million to West End Park. We talked about how important Lynn Creek Trail is. It's restated here in the CA's own words. Part of this development, if you scroll to the Sixth Street stuff, I don't know if I can do that, but if you scroll to Sixth Street stuff, they're going to put in a bike path slash sidewalk to connect Iowa River Trail to Lynn Creek Trail as part of a proposal the city administrator made to connect the trail all the way up to MHS properties. So, and her own words says, hey, we don't want to talk about this for a while. We want to wait some ti, for some time to pass. So frequent comments that we have a laundry list of street repairs. Council has borrowed money for years for street repairs, she says. Borrowing for this doesn't affect that. We can just borrow more money. There are, Vision Marshalltown says there's approximately 655 horn blasts every day. We have a yard. A quiet zone doesn't control the yard. You're moving cars and stuff like that. It controls the through traffic, but I don't think it controls the yard traffic. So how much is actually yard horns versus through horns? There's, there's a whole laundry list of people who signed this under the auspices of Vision Marshalltown. Some of them actually benefit from Martha Ellentai, like Mr. Shooty, who's waiting for $750,000 for a tennis court, B Niblock School Board president.
Your honor, sir.
So, there you go. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Karen Ablow, 109 North 21st Street. I do agree with Representative from Multon and Mink of the heavy pedestrian traffic, especially during the summer months. There's actually a triangle there of the Y, the Aquatic Center, and the other city amenity of library. And I agree that this, the South Second Street should not be closed, especially for the, the safety of, of the children of the minors here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Seeing no one rise, let's go on to the next discussion item.
I was going to say, that was just one point I wanted to make, is that ultimately, this is something that you don't have to decide on this item. You can, if you choose not to fund it, then it basically, it dies. So that's where it does come up in our next item.
And that's one about the new bond borrowing for the year 2019?
Yes. And so I'll have Diana come up and talk a little bit about our debt capacity where, and where we are. And then I have pulled up sort of our, our list of projects which have come up as priority projects for you to discuss then afterwards.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So yes, in addition to the projects that were just talked about, the tennis court and quiet zone, we have eight other projects we need, are in need of funding as well. So I'll let you just look down through there. If you have any questions, that's fine. What I wanted to talk about is actually our debt capacity. So under state statute, we can only legally borrow 5% of our property assessed valuations, which is at 1.6 billion right now. So that would leave us at about 83 million. The council has, in addition to that, imposed a 60% limit of that number. So that would put us about at 49 million. Our existing debt is at 41 million, so that only leaves about 8.4 million to borrow. So, you know, our list is over $10 million, and legally, we can only borrow another 8.4, if that's even what you would want to do at that, at that level. So does anyone have any questions about the debt capacity or any of these projects?
I, I was going to say, I would say just debt capacity at this point. And then I thought we would do a quick run-through some of these projects, which might have been some that haven't been in front of you here recently. And then after that, have discussion of each of them and, and let you all prioritize.
Comments?
Okay, so the first two, we've talked about tonight, the tennis court project, the quiet zone project. Timber Creek Bridge Replacement is one that has been brought up multiple times. The bridge did have the, the footings wash out a year ago, and ultimately, a larger bridge is needed to be outside of the floodway. We're estimating that to be a $500,000 cost. West End Park, we did the presentation of the master plan at the last council meeting, with Phase One having a city cost of $425,000 to it. East Merle Hibbs and Phase One, we did have Brian from McClure Engineering here to talk to you about that briefly and what that looks like. Phase One is basically connecting East Merle Hibbs over to the Plaza Heights Circle and making that north-south connection as well. That project and that phase is meant, is what is Phase One and has an estimated cost of $5 million. Trail resurfacing, we have $50,000 in the CIP currently, and that's just really not going to get us very far on an annual basis. And there is a need of some major improvements in the area from Sixth Street to Marion Street, which we've booked at an additional 200,000 to the 50,000 we currently have budgeted. Sidewalk gaps, our second year has projects in three different areas, including two around elementary schools, estimated at 375,000. Anson Park, we were not able to touch the shelter and we were not able to touch the restrooms there, so we've, we've left some part of that park really unfinished, and there's still work to be done, which we're estimating at 300,000. The MSA parking lot is in need of some repaving. It's a fairly large project, and so we've broken it into half, which would be the west end of the parking lot as basically a first phase, the east end to come back later, west end being 250,000. And then finally, we have a stormwater project that could be ready to go if it has funding. It is at Fourth Street and Meadow Lane, and I believe is a continuance of the work that we have been doing along Fourth Street between basically the police and fire station extending up to Ingladu where it's at right now. And so we'd be happy to answer any questions on these, or go, go however you'd like to.
Remind me what MSA?
The Marshalltown Softball Association.
Thank you.
Is there not money already for the Fourth Street Meadow Lane? It's sitting there waiting to do it. We just ran out of time to do more?
We don't have 2.6 million on hand. And so a lot of the, the way the, the previous stormwater projects had been set up is that you would set your rates to repay debt. And so it was, I believe it was always anticipated that this would be something we would borrow. The rates would be set in a way to repay whatever that payment would be, which I did mention, would be repaid by the Stormwater Fund. It would not go on a tax levy. Just to go through, just a few other, that 5 million for East Merle Hibbs, the first phase, is also something we do have in our urban renewal plan. There is also an economic development component to this too, as it opens up a fairly large area behind Walmart for development, of which there has been some interest in that property and talking with the realtor. We could use basically that Merle Hibbs, or part of that to come from that TIF area in that area. I wouldn't recommend all. I know it says all on there, but that should have been deleted before this was put out there. So basically, a portion of that could be used from the urban renewal area. And then the other little note that I had on here was, it had been asked about, because 12th Avenue, the sidewalk project there has gotten so slowed down, could we reallocate some of the money that we borrowed for sidewalks last year to this year? And yes, you could, but that's still going to leave a future conversation and discussion about how you would then fund 12th Avenue. So we do have 375,000 of the 900,000 that could be reallocated. We can still finish up the engineering and likely property easements and property purchases on 12th Avenue and come back to you at that point when all of that was done and ready to go, to be funded at that time.
On that, on that project, we're going to propose to add five more blocks to that project. So we'll talk about a resolution we'll have to have in the council meeting to add those five in.
We, we can have that project on for discussion again, and so that you can talk more about what it is you're, you're looking at specifically, because ultimately, that's going to impact our agreement with CGA as well.
All right, I talked to Justin, he knows about it.
Okay.
But I, I got, the attorney said that to do it right, we had to come with the resolution at the next council meeting to add those five blocks. We're just asking that if, when you get to the, the intersection at 12th and, what is it, Olive, no, instead of, you're going north, go straight, go straight west, go five blocks straight west down to Seventh Avenue, and that'll connect that to the high school, so that there's a direct connection from there. Because once you get that intersection, you can't do anything but go north. And this will make it so they can go west and go right down, miss downtown and hit the high school.
Yeah. So we can, we can have that as a discussion item and probably have a, what that would look like in the change in the scope of work with CGA as well, for, for you to discuss.
How about, I, I don't see any bonding for any kind of street projects.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I actually, I mentioned that in the actual memo, or Diana mentioned that in the actual memo. So there are some different things that we have going on, where we'll be using some funds on hand, including $500,000 that we borrowed in 2018, as well as a $350,000 street allocate, street repair allocation that exists annually in the road use tax fund that is not allocated for anything else. The other good thing that's happened, and it's, it was, I think easier than we thought it would be, is that we're also getting some FEMA funding that will pay for, FEMA and state funding that'll pay for 85% of the mill and overlay of a significant number of streets in the northeast area of town. And we'll be partnering that with road use tax dollars to redo curbs and sidewalks at the same time, which is going to be a, a large undertaking in a, in a residential area. So that's really where we're leveraging our, some outside dollars with some of our local funds to be able to hopefully create a, a very big impact for the northeast area of the community. So we feel like we have a lot of street work.
Are we going to get a list of the street work, all of it?
Yeah, we can, we can get you a list of basically what's, what's approved with the FEMA part of it. I think Justin and his team are still prioritizing what that other $850,000 would be, that we have on hand would be used for.
Okay.
But we can get you a list of what was approved as part of the FEMA project.
Okay, and that's out of, what, 6 million that they give us?
We're looking at much lower than that. It was a separate project in a separate category. And so we had submitted quite a bit more, but anything that was on a, any type of road that had a designation other than a local-only road was disqualified. So we've, in the past designated Main Street as an arterial, and West Lincoln Way is, I believe, also an arterial. So some other streets that we had included were, were knocked out just because they're not eligible for FEMA funding.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
I have to admit, it's very difficult to prioritize these because they all have a place in expectations that, that they are projects that need completed, or that they would certainly enhance different areas of our community. It is, it, as I said, very difficult to, to prioritize those. I do think that we need to keep our, our sidewalk work current and up to date, rather than putting it off, since we have kind of struggled to keep that going. I think that is something that we need to make some progress on as one of the areas that we need to do.
Thank you. Other comments?
There's, there's a number of projects that we're going to be seeing because of the tornado that we haven't seen yet. I'm, I'm concerned if we, if we, if we commit to some of these projects, and we find out there's something else we need to do downtown, or there's some other projects come up to, I'm, I'm concerned that we're not spending any money downtown. I'm concerned that we're not spending any money downtown. And the reason for that is, if you look up and down Main Street, there's a tremendous tax base there that got hurt. And we, as a city, need to be the big brother and help put that tax base back so we got, we get the taxes off of that piece of property. If we don't spend some money and spend some time uptown, we could lose a lot of tax base. And that concerns me. And I don't see any projects here that even look at downtown. And I'm concerned about that, I think that's wrong. My own feeling.
So just to explain that, one of the internal conversations that we've been having, and it's one that does merit a much larger conversation from the council, is I 100% agree with you that if you look at the street condition of Main Street, State Street, and the cross streets, and even, you know, Church and Lynn, we really do have a very large mill and overlay project that is ahead of us at some point, as well as sidewalk replacement and likely some street scape. And those were all things that were brought out in the Downtown Master Plan 2 with the street scapeing and making some things a little bit more pedestrian-friendly. What we didn't see was that happening in calendar year 2020. I believe, and what Justin and I have talked about, is that's probably a calendar year 2021. So it's something that has been on our minds, we know it is a need, but it's not something that the, I mean, typically, you'd wanna have some planning and design kind of already underway for that to be something to get out to bid. And that's just not the timeframe we're on with that. So the other point is that we still know that there are some demolitions to occur and that there's still some large truck traffic to be in some areas and that we want to let that stuff happen before we would undertake a new project and then potentially have new sidewalks or a new street that's basically being torn up again. So, so I hear your concern, I understand it, but it didn't seem something that would be feasible for 2020 as a project. It's probably something that, you know, as we talk about strategic planning coming up soon, that we'll need to talk about, you know, when do we start that planning and what sort of timeline would we need it to be for it to be a 2021 project?
Now, I'm also talking about the buildings.
Yeah, so...
There's a number of buildings that's gonna need some help. We want downtown to look nice.
And I think, you know, you're getting a little bit ahead of yourself on the other one, but ultimately, we do have a number of resources available right now for those that have projects to apply for.
Okay, thanks.
But, but to go back to your point, I think investment happens when we show that this is, downtown is a place to invest in with quality infrastructure to invite people to those front doors.
Can I ask a question about the Quiet Zone project? The, the $600,000 that's, that's holding a place here, that, that was with closing the Second Street, is that correct?
That's correct. And so that number, if it was to keep Second Street open, I think there was about $100,000 difference more. And so if that were the option, that would increase by $100,000. Thank you.
Other questions or comments up here?
I would say that the issue at hand is paring this down and prioritizing to give staff instruction. These 10 items we've discussed, and have, each of them have their merits by far. We would like to accomplish them in the future, if not in one fell swoop. You can only do that a couple of ways. One, by increasing the percentage that we, the council, have set on the state limit, which would be increasing your bonding power, limits and so on, which I think would have some effect in affecting our bonding of our good stature there. I'm gonna make some decisions because things move on. I'd like to have accurate figures, I know these are estimates always, and estimates do vary, they go over sometimes and rarely they do go under. I realize that the Second Street crossing, yes, would increase that amount in that area. So our task at hand, I think, is giving direction to staff and looking at our bond situation and moving forward. I mean, there's a dramatic way to do it, but it, it results in increased bonding, which means debt. So, and I'm reluctant to give up our, our, our status.
Thank you, other comments up here?
I just had one. On the, I'd be remiss not to bring this up at Fourth Street and Meadow Lane because of the fact that if we don't do that project, what was the reasoning to accomplish on, on, down by the police and fire station and the, and the upgrade of the storm sewer system up to Ingledoo? What was that purpose? If we're not gonna accomplish from Meadow Lane North?
We had, we had drainage issues all the way down. It, that's just the, this part is, it was one of the first things I heard about when I joined the council. Somebody on that street, somebody on your street.
Well, she was a councilman.
No, not, no, it wasn't her, no.
Marla lived on that street.
It wasn't Marla.
Well, it might not have been.
It was another couple that mentioned it to me years and years ago, and it just hasn't been a priority. Because of all the issues downstream, it needed to be part of a bigger project, so. I don't, it would be nice to do it now.
Well, obviously, yeah, because there isn't any. There's not, there's no storm system there. And so it's running down the streets to a project that starts at Ingledoo that was expanded to take care of that water, which we have, for the last six years, sent schoolchildren across the pond at Fourth and Meadow Lane. It's not being taken care of. So I guess if, if we wanna just buy them all boots, I guess we'd just leave the project alone.
Other comments up here? Public comment? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Patricia Sharler, I live at 204 East Lincoln Street. If we're talking about storm sewer, I've been tempted to come and ask the city if I could charge rent. My yard, my landscaping is being eroded, my yard is being eroded, and I'm storing storm sewer water that I would like to get rent for. But that's not what I'm here for. Out of the four storm sewers on that intersection, three don't work. So we get flooded. And it runs up the alley on the other side of my house, and it's real interesting. But the real thing is I'm hearing projects that we haven't done the full study were going to start, but we don't know what we've got like for the utility rights and things. I worked for a very large corporation and we launched products. Not only did we have to design and configure the products against patent rights of other companies, but we had to also figure out if machines could be designed and built in a cost-effective way to make that product so that we could afford to put it on the market. We did a lot of research before we went to management and sold the ideas to them. I keep hearing that we're gonna do Phase One out on the West End Park, but we haven't solved the water issue that we have there. We need to be looking and doing a complete enough project so that we're not continually getting nailed by increased costs because it's gonna come back to the taxpayers repeatedly. And we're robbing one project to fund another and leaving projects incomplete. And I can't manage my checkbook and my personal finances that way, and yet I'm watching a city sit and shift funds and projects are partially done and we don't know the real cost of a project and we want approval to go forward. I'm having some problems, and I know part of it is I need to research things better and be a little better informed, and I'm sure I'll have a little more comfort. But I'm also sure that I'm still gonna have some questions, and I don't think I'm the only citizen that does. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Just a reminder, back in when we were finalizing the budget, Mr. Lamer made a motion to buy down the debt using local option sales tax. And basically, $100,000 saved us 10 cents per thousand on our property insurance. So 8 million, 8.5 million is gonna cost us all $85 per thousand, or $85 on a $100,000 house. Or 85 cents per thousand on a... So I'm just reminding everybody to keep in mind every time one of these numbers comes up here, $100,000 is 10 cents on your property taxes.
I would like to correct that, that ultimately, our property taxes are based on our evaluations. We were able to share, I see Diana's not here. We were, oh, there she is, okay. We were able to share, we did have what were draft numbers from the county assessor back in, I think it was June, July or August, something, where it showed that there was not an overall assessed valuation decrease when it came down to it. And so we've provided those draft numbers to our financial advisor to work up some scenarios on potential property tax rates, knowing that. What you had had in the past, and I think we distributed probably at some point last year with our borrowing, was showing $3 million a year and declining property valuations. And so we felt that that was not a good picture to present again to you tonight because the circumstances have changed. And one other thing to, when calculations are being done on residential properties, there is a residential rollback, which is generally somewhere about 55% of the property value. So it's usually not a one-for-one in terms of what something is on 100,000 or $1,000 of assessed value. So things different, differ there. Ultimately, we won't know the big picture until we actually do get our evaluations in December, when we can show you exactly what that looks like. Why this is before you tonight is the schedule that we are on. Basically, there's public hearings that need to be held. We would probably do a bond rating on this, as we've done for our past bonds, which would need to be done. And then ultimately, the whole idea is that we're closing on this on December 1st, which is when our bond payments are due, December 1st and June 1st. So there's a lot of stuff that has to happen in order for us to be able to meet that timeframe to the point where we would be making no principal or interest payment in this calendar year on this issuance. So this is something that really does need a decision tonight to give us some direction of where we need to go and direct our financial advisor on how to proceed.
Do we have to, do we have to specify each one of these projects? Or can we lump them together? How, how descriptive do we have to be in the bond issue?
We have to describe what we're borrowing for. So like last year, we said we would borrow $900,000 for sidewalks, but we did not state that it was the 12th Avenue sidewalks. So you need to, and that's where our bond counsel and financial advisors break things down into essential corporate purpose and general corporate purpose because they're two different things that I think require a hearing for each, each amount that you would borrow. So we don't have the ability to do that before us tonight, but that's where the direction that you give us is what we will give to our financial advisor and our bond counsel to be able to put those categories together.
Some of the project, some of the projects have plans that are farther along than others. Can you list out the ones that you feel like are fleshed out enough to go for design, for example?
Um, so I was gonna say, what, what remains to be done with the Quiet Zone basically is the, the design contract to give us the plans and specifications that we would put out to bid. We, we don't have that done yet. The Timber Creek Bridge is being designed in-house, I believe? Is that, yep, so that one's being designed in-house, so there's no outside engineering costs, I think, associated with that one. Weston Park is basically the same thing where a concept has been presented, but ultimately, the documents that we would need to put that out for bid have not been generated yet. East Merle Hibs, the engineering of that Phase One is being done as we speak, and I think kind of by early next spring, sometime next spring is when we would anticipate having those plans and specifications to put that out to bid. Trail resurfacing has not been, there's no bid documents or anything on that. We've just specified an area that would, would be covered. The sidewalk gaps is the same things. We've just specified sort of these would be the areas, but there's been no engineering done on it. I believe that we talked about that being done in-house. I think that is still the case, that that design would be done in-house. Justin's not making a happy face, so.
Can you make a comment on the option next to that?
Yeah, I mean, it basically, that, that you could choose to take money that we borrowed last year under the heading of sidewalks in general and fund that $375,000 estimated for the next year. We know that 12th Avenue has had at least one scope change and that there's going to be the acquisition of easements, permanent and temporary, that still needs to happen, and that's going to take time. So it likely could be something that we would be ready to construct in 2020 if everybody was agreeable. But if, you know, if there's not agreement from the property owners on the acquisitions, then we have another issue for you all to think about, so. And if the scope is going to change, then potentially, we don't even have enough money to pay for what, what that new scope would be. But that's a conversation for the next council meeting. The Anson Park Shelter and Restrooms, the restrooms, I believe, were just sort of estimated in spec on, on what we've done for other restrooms. We have not done an overhaul of the shelter other than knowing that it certainly needs a new roof at a minimum to continue to be usable, but that we felt that it was a time where that could be something where a larger project could take place to basically make it a better space for year-round use. The MSA parking lot repaving, again, there's not been any engineering or anything done on that where it's ready to go out to bid. I believe the Fourth Street and Meadow Lane is fully engineered and is ready to go out to bid? 60%.
Back to Anson Park, I'd feel funny if I didn't mention that there were nearly 2,000 people at the 13th Street event last weekend that, that Neighbor Association did a great job of having a band and getting people out. And probably could've used more restrooms that night. Any other comment up here, though?
Yeah, are we gonna, are we gonna have a major expense with the houses that have been left that we haven't even talked about? Where the people walked out and left an empty house sitting there and were going to have to take over, go through court and take over ownership on... I heard there was like 90 of them.
Oh, I don't think our number is that big. One of the things to remind you of that happened in the last fiscal year through the budget process was that we talked about the, some of the fees that we'd been collecting related to landfill and solid waste, and that there was a large amount, I think it was 355,000, that we transferred from the general fund to our D and D fund to basically make it solvent. We have approved a bid of 100, I think it was 140,000 for the demolition of nine homes, which were not tornado damaged. And ultimately, right now, we have three that we, three that were tornado damaged that we're prepping, you know, for demolition, having all the studies and things done to figure out what the scope of work looks like. I would think we'd be maybe 10 more at the most.
Really? What happened to the rest of them?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Just real briefly on that, yeah, we, we started with a list of many that were major damage and destroyed. Some have been demolished on their own by private ownership, which of course then takes it out of our issue. Some have been repaired or under construction to repair. They had structural engineers come in, give them a report, tell them what to fix. They've gotten building permits, they're underway. A good number of them have done that. And then we have a few that have been transferred ownership to somebody who has that intention of repair. So, yeah, we are, we are definitely bringing that list down quite a bit. And I think, I think, yeah, I would guess maybe another 10 or so beyond the three that we're looking at would be my estimate at this point.
Okay, thank you, that's a great news. I thought we had a huge number.
It was interesting running through the neighborhood yesterday how many had been fixed up with new siding and new roofs. Other comments up here?
The only other thing I can suggest, if, if there's not any striking, is maybe we just go through one by one and vote on them and see what... is maybe we just go through one by one and vote on them and see what number we come up to.
So my only questions with the big projects, the East Merle Hibs. There has been interest in developing back there. Stormwater, the Meadow Lane stormwater, you said were 60% there with the design?
Yes.
The engineering?
Yes.
Okay.
How is the repayment on that, the stormwater, repaid by stormwater funds? What does that look like? I mean, is that over time? Is that over?
Correct. So basically, when our financial advisor puts together sort of the debt service schedule and what that looks like in annual principal and interest payments, she'll do a separate one for that amount that we would then, in our annual budgeting process, basically say this funding source is stormwater versus this funding source is the tax levy.
But it still has to come out of this fund initially?
Yep, borrowing, because it's not a revenue bond, that's where it wouldn't, it has to count against our debt capacity. Yep.
Another question in, from where we had stated that we only wanted to use 60% of the state statute of the debt limit. What, I know that Mr. Martin stated that, you know, he wanted to make sure that we did not affect our bonding rating there. How does, what effect would it have if we said, okay, instead we, you know, want to raise that? What effect is that going to have on our bonding rating?
I know that, I can't think of our most recent report, but I do know that they reflect upon that we do have the capacity, the legal capacity to borrow because basically you're reserving, with that policy, you're reserving 40%. And so there is a significant amount that could still be borrowed should the council need to do that or waive the policy or do something.
Thank you.
In the hopes of having something to eat and actually getting ready for a trial tomorrow, I'm not sure we've got the time to go through every item one by one and try to take a vote to give direction. What I'm tempted to do is suggest that we come up with a committee of people up here, three and, three or fewer, and maybe a few citizens to try to report back to us with priorities. But if somebody has a better suggestion and it's good to stay here, I may have to leave in a little bit, but we could do it one by one.
I think it's important for us to, we're the ones they elected. I think we should decide. And I think we can decide and I think that's a viable option, what Ms. Cahill just said. I haven't voted that way before. It's just at this point, it's so important, I think, for our community to do some infrastructure and some quality of life projects together. And I just think that that, the sidewalks are really important. The stormwater project is, it's a great time to do the stormwater project because we're finishing the other piece and it's easier to pick up the project now than come back a year from now and pick it up and dust it off. You know how things, personnel change. It could be personnel change or there could be just loss of memory. So I think it's important to do those projects. The East Merle Hibs, I don't know if it's the right time, but it's almost, it's just a risky thing. You just say, yeah, we think it's time to do it. It's been years in the making and we're almost ready to do it. So I think it's important to do it. We know we need housing. And the other things, like the bridge replacement, that's important for that neighborhood. The trail resurfacing is important to maintain the trails. So, and I'm just, I'm excited about working with the school district and I think that's important to say yes to that. And then the quiet zone project, I think is, wow, that's been decades in the making, too. It's kind of like the Merle, or the Meadow Lane project that I've been hearing about the quiet zone for that long, people wanting that. So it's a great time to do all of this.
If, I would say if there's not the ability to make a decision tonight, there's not enough time, that we would request a special meeting prior to October 14th. We're in a three-week delay and that this is something, as I explained, has some timeliness with it to time up with a, basically, closing on any debt issuance on December 1st.
I have, I have one question. The, and this is probably for the superintendent. Since he gives the timeline that they aren't going to be doing any work until next summer or late next summer, do we have to make the commitment tonight or can we make the commitment then?
I think he said spring would be ideally when they would be doing things or starting things. So I, I mean, it's one of those things where the question would, it's been irregular for us to borrow money sort of mid-year. And so I think that would be, it's not impossible, there's nothing stopping us from doing that. But it's then, you would certainly want to make it worth your while unless you were going to do a private placement for just whatever small dollar amount. That's probably something more that, if it was to be delayed to a future borrowing, that we would need to discuss with our financial advisor, the best way to do that.
Well, I'm in favor of everything on the list except the first two. And then the second one, the people said they didn't want it, so. They are the people that elected us, I guess. We use those same people to determine that we're going to put flowers in the medians downtown, so. We listened to them that time, aren't we going to listen to them this time?
I have to admit, I also heard from many of the downtown business owners that in order to make the upper floor more appropriate for housing up there, that the sound, that the quiet zone was really an important piece of that. And I am strongly in favor of that upper floor housing and again, in keeping our residential areas in Marshalltown, in that downtown, in that quadrant. I think that that is a win for everyone, so. Like I said, I am also, that one just really, it tears me, but I, like many of our other park projects, not everyone is for them, but we know it improves our quality of living, quality of our recreation, drawing folks in. I would, can I make a motion to move our, our state, our state limit of our debt limit for the state statute? If we could move that to, oh, I got to figure out how much it would take. My finance person, do you have any, is a quick addition there for me?
What, to add in the quiet, the 2nd Street to leave it open?
To keep, okay. Then I will do it, do it that way. I would move that we exceed the 60% limit that the council has put on our debt limit for state statute at, in previous times, are the council imposed limits. So I would move that we exceed that to meet the projects that are outlined in this forum.
Second.
Discussion?
Are we going to pay enough off that we wouldn't have to do this? Is there enough up for payment, final payment next year? Do you know? I'm sorry. That they'll come off the books?
Yeah, so Spear Financial is our financial advisor, so they kind of did some scenarios based on borrowing 5 million.
Okay.
So it depends on when your principal payments start. So, you know, she was playing around with them, trying to see whether or not if we delayed the first payment for several years, that's when the bulk of our payments for all these other bond obligations would be paid. So, yeah, to continue the conversation, we're trying to figure out what you were interested in borrowing for and how much. So, yeah, if you, or if you're wanting to borrow for the full 10 million, 950, you know, that would be above our council-designated statute, but that would be lifted through your motion. But the 2.6 million would come out of revenues, not property tax for the stormwater. So that would make a difference, too.
Yeah, so that, that's revenue bonds, right?
Well, we would do it through a GEO bond, but it would come out of revenues from the stormwater. So it wouldn't go on the property tax levy.
And is there any bonds coming due next year that would lower the amount that we have on the books?
So I think what you're asking, and it's something that we're going to have Maggie with Spear do, is forecasting our debt capacity. And so we don't have that before you tonight because it was going to be working off of the new valuation figures that we had given her as draft valuation figures. So, but it is something that we see as a need, but we don't have that for you tonight.
Yeah, because with her motion, I'm wondering if we even need it. If there's, if there's bonds coming off of the books next year, it may be enough coming off the books in the one that's going to be a revenue bond or general bond that's a revenue generator, we won't have to do that.
So what I think, you would be exceeding it at least for the remainder of this fiscal year. I think that's the, the calculations that are up on your screen are based on this current fiscal year. If you borrow in December, that is still exceeding it through June.
Borrow it in January.
Well, it'd still be exceeding the debt capacity through June.
I thought, I thought, I thought the debt capacity was on a calendar year.
No, it's on a fiscal year because it's based on those July 1st valuations.
She's right.
But we make payments.
The $10 million that you can borrow that's tax exempt is calendar year.
Other discussions or comments?
I got you now. Okay, I understand now.
Motion by Sue is seconded by Bethany.
Thank you. Other discussion or comments up here? Out there? Let's vote.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
No.
Hoop?
No.
Lamer?
Nope.
Martin?
No.
Weirin?
Yes.
Pushing fail.
What's the possibility of getting the Spear forecast? If we were to have a special meeting, would we have it by then?
That'd be great.
Okay, I see the, I see Diana nodding here, yes, we would. Well, you know, when I started on the council about seven years ago, we met every Monday night and now we're just doing two a month. Maybe it's time to have a special meeting to address something this important.
I think it is. You just have it as a lone item.
I'm getting enough heads nodding to do that. Let's go for it. Okay.
That'll be next Monday, or?
Yeah, I, there is nothing, it's like the 5th, the 30th? That is our fifth Monday. I don't show anything on my calendar in the evening.
We should, shouldn't you check with Spear and make sure they can be available and they have the?
I think she'd be able to. She turns things around pretty quickly.
Okay.
So do we, is that, do, we don't need to make a motion for that or to move for a special meeting on the, the mayor did it?
I'll just, with the heads nodding as many as they did, I will direct that we have a special meeting next Monday night at 5:30.
Good.
We are at that time in the meeting to call for?
We have one more item.
Oh, no.
So, this is, this is one where Council Lamer had brought this, Councilmember Lamer had brought this up quite some time ago about what are we doing for new construction? And so I did go back and look at, you know, what is the approximate value of the maximum project from the two incentive grants through the MCBD? It was about $46,000. And so what is before you tonight in this memo, which I'm asking would come back on a resolution at the next meeting if you would so approve, would be setting up an incentive of $50,000 for new construction of $1 million or more with a designation from the local option sales tax council designated portion of $250,000. So that would be, I know of, there's at least three projects that we are very well aware of that would be new construction projects in the downtown that would qualify this. And there's likely, I would say, a few others out there that would be eligible as well. So if that was, be something that you would like to designate, we can bring that back to you on a resolution at the next council meeting, at the regular council meeting on October 14th.
I for one would like to do so. I think it's advisable.
I agree. I would like to see it done.
Can I take that as a motion?
Of course, I'd like to see it done, too.
So move.
Is that second by Cahill?
Yes.
Discussion? Roll call.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. That's direction to the staff. And now we are at a public comment time.
Your honor?
Yes.
I have a, I have, I have a real quick, I would like to have a resolution at the next council meeting that directs that we dedicate the new fire and police facility to the service of Tommy Thompson for everything he's done for the community and everything he's done for the city. He took us through the Iowa Finance Authorities screw-ups and...
Iowa Trust Fund?
Yeah, anyway, he's, he dedicated a lot of his time to our time. And so I'm asking that we have a plaque made that's installed inside the front of the building that just dedicates the building to his service and also a plaque to be made that dedicates the training facility room to the honor of Councilman Schubert, who started the first auxiliary police department for the Marshalltown Police Department. I would like to have that done if it's so wanted by the rest of the councilors.
Can we do this by nod of the head?
Sure.
Sounds great.
Thank you, thank you much.
Very good. Thank you for that. Okay, public comment. Anybody wish to address the group with the microphone?
No, no, no.
Seeing nobody rising quickly, let's declare the council meeting is adjourned at 7:38 PM. Thank you for coming.